It is now 5:30. We will begin the special called meeting for April 8, 2013. We do have a quorum. Order of business, if y'all will please bear with us, we'll get through this meeting part. I would like to remind everybody that this is being televised live. After we have our vote, we will close the meeting out and then we will invite the team leaders, the new group to come up and we will offer a time for you to talk with them immediately after our meeting. So if y'all will just bear with us just for a few minutes. The order of business, motion to approve a 2013 user use agreement for a youth baseball and softball league. You have in front of you, it's the contract. It's virtually the same contract that you approved with another league prior to. There are some changes. Bruce, if you would like to go over a couple of those changes.
Mayor, of course, the dates have obviously changed. We're looking at the season to begin April 27th and this will also include a fall season which is scheduled to begin around August 31st. One of the big changes between this one and the previous is in regards to the concession sales, which is in section nine on page five. Essentially, the new league will be purchasing food and beverages. They will be operating the concession stands, paying sales tax on those sales. And then there will be a split of the profits 50/50 between this organization and the city. And these funds, of course, will be used to help with the maintenance of all these fields and facilities out there. So that's the main reason that this was put in there.
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve or to deny this agreement with RBI Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I will now open it up for discussion here amongst the board members if anybody would like to ask any questions. Any questions? I see no questions. I will do a roll call. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor.
Aye.
Alderman Waldron.
Aye.
Alderman Brooker. And I vote aye. Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to welcome RBI Incorporated to our youth sports. I will close this meeting. And this is Mr. John Ray Clemmons. He will be sitting over here and I'll let him introduce his staff. Also, A.C. Davis, if you'd like to come over here. And I'm gonna let you kinda get him hooked up there and I'm gonna let him tell all of you parents a little bit about this program and where he sees us going from here. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it and we appreciate the vote of confidence you've shown us this evening. I'm the chairman of the board of Nashville RBI. Nashville RBI, essentially, we're driving baseball in the inner cities. We're a major league baseball sanctioned 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We were established in 1996 in Nashville, Tennessee. We gained the 501(c)(3) status in 2003 in Nashville. Population on which we've been focusing mainly since our incorporation, our inner-city disadvantaged youth. This is our first opportunity to branch outside of Metro Davidson County. Part of our mission statement in Nashville RBI is to promote baseball, to provide baseball to youth and to use baseball as a hook to make a positive impact on the lives of children, whether it be facilitating and encouraging academic achievement by literacy skills, giving them positive mentors and role models, and we do that with our coaches and through special activities. It is certainly an honor to be affiliated with the city of Laverne. We very appreciate it and the opportunity to be here tonight. I have with me Ms. Jolynn Hilliard sitting to the council's love here. She's our executive director. I have Mr. Andrew Marinas who is a board member who serves with me and former chairman of Nashville RBI. He has partnered with the PR firm with McNeely, Piggan, Fox, who provides public relations services for Nashville RBI. Pro bono.
I think it just needs to be turned on.
We try to project. There we go. I hope everybody could hear me before. I think it'd probably be the easiest thing to just open the floor for questions if anyone has any questions. I think that'll make this a much more efficient process.
If you would, just please come to the podium. That way they can hear your questions.
Before we start the questions, I want to point out for anybody that has a question about this, we've been getting phone calls, this has nothing to do with the Laverne Football League, okay? This is a total separate entity, so everything will stay the same there. So clear that up.
Most of us would like to know is, are our teams staying together? When will we start to practice? You know, kind of a general rundown of where we're gonna go from here as far as like where we already are, as far as like formed together in teams and coaches and everything, and then how we're gonna go forward with that.
Right. And what was your name, ma'am?
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth. What our plan is going forward, as you know, and I know it's been a source of frustration for many of you, we've been working on this under wraps for a couple of weeks. Our executive director, Ms. Hilliard, saw the announcement on the news just like many of you did and were taken aback by the fact that baseball was not, was gonna be threatened down here. Jolynn acted proactively, called us, and that's where we got involved. And we began the process of discussing this matter with the mayor who stepped up to the plate because she wanted to see this season saved and she did all she could as well as the other fine folks up here and Mr. Davis with Parks. And we worked together and during the course of that time, we spent the past couple of weeks hashing out the contract which was voted on just a few moments ago and planning to answer some of the questions that Elizabeth just asked. First and foremost, we're gonna try our best and we're gonna start the season on April 27th. I know that's delayed a few weeks from your current, but you have to bear with us, this hit us like a ton of bricks, just like it did you. And obviously, there's a lot of organizational issues that had to be worked out and still need to be worked out. We're gonna have a coaches' meeting tomorrow evening at the Pee-wee Field and I believe that's at 6:30.
We're going to have a coach pitch meeting for coaches ages four through eight at 6:30. The meeting will last about 45 minutes. And then at 7:15, we will have a 12 and under and a 10 and under coach meeting. And then at 8, we will meet with the 18 and under and also the softball coaches.
So at that time of the coaches' meeting, if anyone is unable to make the coaches' meeting, you can reach out to Ms. Hilliard. You can get her contact information after this meeting. She will provide you. We're gonna have to redo all background checks that were performed on coaches and assistant coaches and we're gonna facilitate those and that information will be gathered tomorrow at the meeting on the applications and registration materials. Registration for teams will begin as early as Wednesday morning and we will set up shop here, I believe, or somewhere. We'll make the decision on the announcement of the location, but we're gonna start registration as soon as possible. Now, on the registration materials, we will have a blank for the participants, put the team that they were on, the coaches, and so forth. We're gonna do our best to keep the teams together as they were. What we don't know, the unknown variable here, is if some of the children have, and some parents understandably may have gotten impatient and gone to, joined other leagues. So we don't know if we're gonna keep all the children the same. Also, we're gonna have a few more children joining the league. So the core of the teams, we're gonna do our best to keep together. There may be a few more players added to them or replaced if we lost some children. And I believe that answered Elizabeth's questions.
Okay. Now, my question is, well, thank y'all for getting a partnership established so our kids can play ball, but nothing to take away from baseball, I run a baseball team also. Now, I hear a whole lot of talk about baseball, but when we got to talking about age groups and everything else, we went to strictly baseball and I didn't hear anything about softball. So what's the details about softball? Because I mean, even though we run baseball teams, we also run softball teams, what's the vision for softball going forward? Because I know us coaches have been working hard to better ourselves and coaches so we can get more girls to come out there, but I hear everybody stressing baseball.
Right. Well, one of our main initiatives, and we've been doing this in our own metro leagues, Ms. Hilliard's been working on this very hard, getting softball back into our base in metro. And we also have some great softball fields here that we've visited here in Laverne. And softball is gonna get just as much attention. We'll be doing the same process for the softball teams as baseball.
So when we have these coaches meeting, like you said, age groups at 6:30 and everything else, is that baseball and softball? Is that just baseball? When you said softball at the end, is it all softball coaches at the end? Because I need to know what time that I need to be somewhere.
Right. I was going to address the softball at 8 o'clock with, also with 18 and under.
So you got all softball at 18 and under?
I mean, we can have our own softball meeting if you would like to have that.
Reason why I'm asking is because when you said it, you said the different age groups.
Right.
I have an 8 and under, 8 and under, like you said. I fit in your age group.
Right.
But you didn't say, clarify softball or baseball.
Right. It was my intention to have the softball coaches at 8 o'clock so I could just address softball as a whole and going forward in all age groups, but if you would like it in a separate, you know, age group broke out, we can certainly do that.
I would think you need to break it out because how we run, well, I'm sorry, let me back up. How we played 8 and under, I'm not gonna say it's exactly the same as the big girls and I don't want coaches to get confused between the different age groups. So it would be good if you broke those out in a different age groups of softball coaches.
Okay. Would you like to come to the 8 and under baseball meeting or are you wanting specifically softball? Because we would have to do that Wednesday night.
I mean, if you're breaking out age groups for baseball, you might as well break out age group for softball, just to keep consistency across the board.
Okay. We can do that.
Thank you.
I think ultimately for what's looking to be accomplished at these meetings isn't necessarily age specific, but it's to address the coaching of the particular league. So we'll discuss however you want to do it. Ms. Hilliard will be in charge of that. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. I'd like to know what about T-ball? T-ball and registration, what it would cost and if they're gonna have open registration more than just one day, a time that's more feasible for people to come to, like Wednesday morning? I work, so I mean, is there gonna be something that's gonna be able to accommodate those? Can't do the one? You haven't mentioned any other time to register and will there be anything for T-ball for my three and a half-year-old?
We were going to address all these issues with the coaches and kind of get a plan and overview with the coaches. Registration will be offered every day this week. It is my intentions to be done by Friday with registration if possible so we can get you on the field by the 27th. So we would like to register as teams if we can, but I was going to see logistically with the coaches, you know, open that up to discussion with them and get some good convenient times for everyone so everyone, you know, can be accommodated.
So T-ball is on the agenda for this season?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the cost? Will that be disseminated among us at a later date or?
Yes.
Yes. Well, that's a good point to bring up. The cost for our league, I understand that in previous years, the cost was a certain level. One of the things that Nashville RBI does, we have in the past provided free baseball to our primary population, which is disadvantaged inner-city youth. We do charge fees, but they will be considerably less, I assume, than what they have been in previous years. We don't build in much room there or if any, unfortunately for us, for profit, we essentially meet our cost at the cost level. And so right now, we're looking at a target costed participation fee of anywhere from $70 to $80 to cover all of our costs.
Okay. So that's considerably higher than what we paid.
For T-ball?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we gonna do stage or? I think that's, I think we're gonna, it's gonna have to be a flat fee.
It was usually a flat fee.
Okay. And that date of the 27th, is that opening day or is that when practice will resume?
No, opening day.
Okay. So we'll have practices that'll be set up amongst the coaches after they speak prior to.
Yes.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Hi. I just, I'm a T-ball coach and I did hear that you said that T-ball is gonna play, but I also heard you give ages of four to eight. And I just wanted to clarify that if we have three-year-olds on our team, that they will be able to play.
Yes.
Okay.
They will. And with our organization, we have three, four T-ball. I was told coming in, and that's why I want to speak with the coaches, I don't know a lot of details about what y'all have done in the past. I will present, you know, what we do as an organization, but yes, three-year-olds will be able to play.
And also, I'm an assistant coach. My head coach could not be here tonight. Has there been contact made to head coaches about this meeting tomorrow night? I can see heads shaking. No, because I mean, that's kind of, I mean, I know personally, I can't be there tomorrow night and I, if my head coach can't be there, then our entire team's not represented. So it's just, communication with coaches would be appreciated.
Well, that's what we're starting the process. Yeah. And I apologize, you know, this, like I said, this just hit everyone here in the last couple of weeks. We just entered into the discussion about a week and a half ago to try to come in and address the situation. We've just now been able to hash out our contract over the issue over the weekend. And so, you know, this is a, you know, this is a learning curve for everybody, getting familiar with one another. We're still gathering the data. We will rely heavily on volunteers from the community to save costs. We will also rely heavily on information being shared from current coaches and the information we gather through the application process. You know, we were able to get the coaches' meeting set up today, so it's, you know, it's not like it's being withheld. We're just announcing it here and then, like I said, for all of you who do know if your coaches aren't here or if your friends who are coaches who aren't here, please get Ms. Hilliard's contact information. Send that contact information to your volunteers, to your coaches, friends, assistant coaches who aren't here, and she will disseminate that in a blast email, whatever she needs to do.
And at that point, you want the coaches to then go to our team members that we know of to give the information about how to, you said registering as a team, so I assume you mean you want teams saying, these are the kids and here are their registration.
Yes. I think that would be quicker to do that and my.
I think a lot of coaches, especially in the higher, would love to say, here's my team, let me contact them, let me come to you with their information and help you get them registered. I think that that would be something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. At the coaches' meeting tomorrow night, we will have forms.
So will we practice before opening?
Yes. Yeah. We just have to get everybody registered. We have to get the background checks completed. Assuming we get everybody's background checks in, we can turn them around in about 48 hours. You know, we just have to check those boxes. We're starting from scratch here, unfortunately. You know, we're just doing, we're gonna do everything we can and kind of fast-forward motion to get the season underway. And as soon as we get the teams set up, we know what the schedule's gonna look like, how many participants we have, we can start laying out the practice schedule and then the game schedule soon after that.
The umpires who have already paid their fees and went out and bought all of their shirts and their uniforms and everything, are y'all going to keep those umpires who have signed up to umpire this season?
Yes. We have no plans of changing the umpire system here. We're simply gonna work with the same one. The mayor informed us that there's an umpire system in place here and we plan to use the same group.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So how long of a season are we looking to be playing? Because I have a lot of kids and parents who've already told me come middle of June, as myself, that I already have vacations planned.
Right.
So.
Well, we're looking to play at least 12 games in the season.
So are we gonna double up games during the week or on the weekends or something? Because there's no way possible you can do that with that.
Right. Well, under the contract, we have set nights of the week that we're allowed to use the ball fields. So we're just gonna have to see what we can schedule out based on the number of participants and the number of teams that are actually full. And we really won't know that answer until we have.
So we might actually not even play 12 games.
No, we're gonna play at least 12 games.
At least 12 games.
I have a question about concession duty. There was a $35 fundraising fee that we had to pay. Would that also be included in uniforms? Will we get dry fit? I mean, is there, would the uniforms be in order in time? It's only like two, two or three weeks.
Right. We're working on the uniform orders. I'm not sure what's, what's the $35 fee.
It was a fundraising fee. Just buy a PDA and pay the full price. Would we have to pay that?
I don't, I don't know about that.
Okay. So it's $8 if we just, if we have a fee, then we have an additional fundraising fee.
I don't know. What we plan on doing is just a per child fee. And like I said, that's gonna be within that range once we figure out the cost. We're still working with the umpires and some of the, the variable cost to set that exact fee and we'll know that within the next few days.
And concessions, concessions, will they be the same? I know each team have a role. You have to do the concession duty at least four times throughout the season. Would that stay the same, consistent or?
That would be ideal. We haven't discussed that, but we, like I said, we're gonna rely heavily on volunteers. We've got, we're got a system set up under the contract to keep up with the concession sales. And to the extent there's already a system in place that's working, we don't wanna reinvent the will. We're not here to try to, you know, change things. We're here simply to keep baseball in Laverne and if something's working, we want it to keep working.
And softball.
And softball.
I'm sorry, I got two girls. No, actually, if you count them all, I got 26 girls.
No. Softball is a very important part of this and nobody's gonna be excluded.
And our chief of police is big in softball too, so.
Tell him, make sure you come join us at a couple of games. My next question is about the rules. I understand, well, every park has their, their homegrown rules. Okay? So we play ball up here, we play drop, third, strike, we play leadoff, we play steal. I mean, once you get out of basically what, coach pitch, it's big league ball. And that's the way we like it, because I mean, we teach them at an early age, we teach them the fundamentals, so when we start moving up, there's no educational change that has to take place. Now, it's just, I just hone in my, my physical ability to make my basic skills better. Are you all trying to take away things like that or y'all, I mean, is there a strict way that you all play ball that's gonna contradict with the way that we teach these kids how to play ball now? Because I can't necessarily say that we, we don't, it's not, we don't tone back the style of play ball. You go out there, you put your best night on the field, you play ball, you teach all your kids how to, how to bat. Everybody does what they're supposed to do now. I'm not sure if y'all take away drop, third, strike, no leadoff, no steal, you gotta wait to the ball, we play ball, cross the plate, softball, then you can take off? So do y'all have any rule modifications?
Do we have any rule modifications? Well, as you know, the rules vary from age level to age level, whether it be T-ball, pitch, tee, whatever. In our leagues, we generally play Cal Ripken rules of baseball, but when it comes down to it, you know, baseball rules are baseball rules. Like I said, we're not trying to reinvent the will here in Laverne. We obviously, this is about the children, about learning the game of baseball and softball, about learning valuable life lessons and self-discipline and hard work. Those are the focuses, so to the extent there's any minute differences in detail of rules, they won't be noticeable, if any.
My son's coach has, he's decided not to come back, so I'm very concerned about being, the information given to me, since he won't be at the coaches' meeting tomorrow. Is there online registration that we, that we'll be able to do?
Well, that's what I said. Ms. Hilliard will have a PDF form and if you go to our website, nashvillerbi.com.
Okay.
Her contact information is on that website and if you contact her, she will be able to send out her email or fax a version of the application form to whoever needs it.
Okay. Nashvillerbi.com.
Nashvillerbi.com.
And can we put that on our?
I'm out at City Hall also and have them available here, or if it's a PDF.
Whatever we do to make it convenient, we'll be happy to do.
Yeah. We're not, we're not here to hide the ball. We're just, every avenue possible we'll use.
Is registration, are we gonna take part in the mornings or are we gonna do?
No. We just wanna start it as soon as possible so that as long as we need to be somewhere to register people, we'll be there. But we'll get the exact details of the timeframe set up, but you know, we understand, we're all, I left work to come down here. I know all of you left work to come over here, so everybody has their busy schedules and so we understand that we need to work within those. Yes, sir?
As a coach, is it possible for me to get me started and register all the team at one time?
That's what.
Bring you a package for my whole team at one time?
Yes. And those are the things I was gonna address tomorrow night at the coaches' meeting. I will have all the materials together for you to take back to your teams. Any questions?
How do I have a team meeting on the parents?
Yes.
You get the forms and my, turn it all in you at one time?
Yes.
Can you repeat the time, so the meetings tomorrow night?
Yes. We're going to do the coach pitch, baseball, four to eight at 6:30. The 12 and under and the 10 and under at 7:15. And then the 18 and under at 8 o'clock. And then we will have to, if, depending on work schedules for the softball, we'll break those up separately. I don't know if 6 o'clock is too early to start or?
It says last year. It should be.
That's about what games are.
I'm sorry.
We used to play 5:00 to 5:00, games are six a lot. It's later than we used to do here anyway.
Okay. All right. Then 6 o'clock for softball tomorrow.
All softball?
Yes. Let's do all softball and then we can break off after tomorrow night into separate meetings if we need to.
You said coaches for the four and eight-year-olds. What about the ones that are under four? My coach teaches.
Okay. 8 and under?
I'm happy to address any other questions anyone has about our organization, our history, experience, anything like that.
Y'all, please come to the podium because other people, we're being televised live and they can't hear you. And maybe a question that somebody at home is wanting to ask.
Yes. You mentioned about RBI disadvantaged kids in the community. Just explain to me a little bit about what do you mean by that?
Well, we primarily have focused in the past on providing baseball to children who were unable to take part in other leagues that were charging what I consider to be higher fees. So if children weren't able to participate in those leagues, we provide them with a free baseball league. That's how we started. It's an organization that started out of South Central Los Angeles by a former major league baseball player. And we have primarily been focused on the inner cities, hence the name Reviving Baseball in the Inner Cities. So we provide baseball to those youth who may have been otherwise unable. You know, it's, baseball is a unique ballgame that we all love, softball as well, where, you know, you gotta have the space and a lot of equipment to play baseball and a little bit of organization. You know, you can't just pick up a basketball, take a shot. So what we do is, and historically have been to provide the equipment, the ball fields through partnerships such as this one with Metro Parks in Nashville, to provide inner-city youth with opportunity to get out. to provide inner-city youth with opportunity to get out and enjoy the game in a positive environment and learn it.
Also, too, just to let you know and kind of help you out, a lot of the coaches, like the gentleman said, we do have a lot of information already. So that's gonna, you know, really help out and speed up the process. So we already have our teams together. There may have been some that might have already left. So just wanna let you guys know that we kind of already headed them, headed, you know, headed the schedule, so.
Yeah. That's great. And that will actually help us out and speed this process along. You know, like I said, we're not looking to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
We're not wanting to tear teams apart, you know, change things up. We wanna take the good things that are already in place and build upon those and make this season happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, do not think you've done the 18-and-under draft and you think that?
Then we'll need to do an 18-and-under draft. Things we need to know. Like I said, up until this point, it's been Mr. Cope and I have been doing a lot of contract talk and formality. Ms. Hilliard's been using the best information available to her to try to organize this thing and prepare for all these types of questions and prepare to get baseball season and softball season underway and T-ball season. So, you know, just, and what's that?
Softball.
I said softball. And, and so, you know, we'll make it happen. Just bear with us. Open lines of communication are gonna be key. You know, there's gonna be some bumps in the road, I'm sure of it. But, you know, those are growing pains. But at the end of the day, we're gonna have baseball, softball, and T-ball in Laverne. And I'm not sure that was gonna happen otherwise. I know the mayor would have done everything she had to do to make it happen. But here's a situation we're in, and we're gonna make the best of it and make sure the children have a place to play ball.
Well, if I see no other questions, I mean, A.C., they'll be around. If y'all have, if y'all think of anything while we're up and about. I want to thank all of you for coming out. Thank you for being patient with us. This was something that none of us saw coming. It hit us. We dealt with it. And we want to say welcome, RBI. And I'm ready to play ball.
Thank you.